Well done, Josh.
I don't know if I did anything, but.
Well, thank you all for your patience. We had some technical difficulties. But welcome everyone to the Lincolnville Selectmen's Meeting. It is the 27th of September. And before we get rolling, we did exit executive session and we have a motion.
I move to deny the abatement request requested pursuant to Title 36 MRS 8412 in case number A.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And Josh, would you read the quote of the evening?
Sure. "Real freedom lies in wildness, not in civilization." Charles Lindbergh.
Thank you very much. And I would like to open the podium for any non-agenda items for the Citizens Forum. And seeing no one rush up to the podium, let's move along to the Administrator's Report.
First, I'll be the bearer of bad news for everyone. First half taxes are due next Wednesday, October 6th, or no later than next Wednesday, October 6th, here at the Town Office. You can pay online if you so desire. Winter sand is up and done in the building. No challenges, no problems, all there. Absentee ballots, which will be for the November 2nd elections or voting, should be available next week. You can submit a request now if you wish, or you can come in and do that next week when the ballots come in from the state. I have submitted the American Rescue Plan Act request for funding. It's currently under review, whatever that means in cyber world. Our allocation will be $235,176 payable in two equal halves. One this year and one at least a year later. The Board of Selectmen have received an invitation from the Camden Select Board to have a discussion on dams. I forwarded an email to you folks all today asking you to save the date. Conveniently, it's October 14th at 1:00 in the afternoon. So if you can make that, please let me know so I can let them know, count who's coming, and if there'll be at least three of you, I'll put together an agenda. That meeting will be held at the Camden Town Office in the French Conference Room. And the only other thing I had is Selectmen Garrettson asks for an update on two projects that have been ongoing. One's a long time ongoing, which was the Harbor Camera. I've spoken with two vendors. The next challenge we have is updating the cost that we received for internet service there. And I'll be in contact with the LCI about that. And the other was, can I read my own notes? Oh, on the server replacement. That's been very slow and methodical, I guess is the best way to put it, when you work with our computer guy. The next on my to-do list from him is to give him the list of email addresses that we wish to have, and then he's gonna do whatever magic he does on his end and get the thing coming our way, I believe. Those questions, I met with Chair Dunn last week too about some of the other things that were approved in the budget. It might be nice if we, at some point, could have a sit-down discussion amongst the five of you and me about priorities, because I've prioritized what I think needs to come in what order, and you may all have different priorities, and the last thing I want to be doing is working on those in reverse order. So, and I probably can give you an update on each one of those as well, where we stand and with little checkboxes. Typically, I don't know how many different things I've got going at once, but I'd work on, you know, Priority 1 until I need to request information from somebody else or get something to fill in, and then I go down to 2 and 3 and kind of backfill when the information comes back. But didn't know if that might be something the Board would like to schedule for some point in October, and just to make sure that I'm headed down the right road so we get all these things done before the year comes up.
So do you see that, like, in a workshop format, like, on an off Monday night, or as part of a Selectman's meeting, or what's your thoughts?
If the agenda was gonna be light like this, I might say on a Selectmen's meeting night, but a workshop might be more beneficial, so we're not sidetracked by a liquor license and, you know, an abatement and whatever else, and we can focus solely on that, and we don't have to... That would be, I think a workshop would be my preference. Maybe what I ought to do, if the Board likes that idea, is to send you all kind of a scheduling email so you could check some doodle boxes or something and say, yeah, these dates work, or these dates don't.
How does that sound to everyone?
That's great.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, David.
Okay. And I think that's all I have for Administrator's Report.
Okay, any questions for David?
Yeah, I have a question for David. At the last meeting, we were talking about a public hearing for the meeting format, hybrid.
Yep.
Where are we in scheduling that?
Well, we're not. When we, I think when we left that, we left it that I was gonna put together some information on budget impacts and how we would have to basically fund a position to do what Josh just did over here. And on priorities, I thought we were talking at budget time, we were gonna get that versus sooner rather than later.
Also, Mike, I meant specific to the things David brought up in the Administrator's Report, not in extemporaneous opportunity.
Oh, I'm always available.
I'm sorry, I didn't know where to bring that up.
That's all right. Okay, so moving along to upcoming meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here at the Town Office unless announced otherwise. The Lakes and Ponds Committee meets September 28th, 4 o'clock, at Breezemere Park in the Van Stan. School Committee is meeting Monday, October 4th, 6:00 p.m. It says remote meeting on the agenda. I don't know if they're meeting remote or in person or what they're doing. Recreation Commission is scheduled to meet Thursday, October 7th, 5:30. Call for a location to verify that meeting will actually be held. Town Office will be closed on Monday, October 11th in observance of Indigenous Peoples' Day or Columbus Day. And the Board of Selectmen will meet next on Tuesday, October 12th, 6:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. And are there any upcoming community events anyone has to share? Now we'll move along to the meeting minutes from the 13th.
I move the Board approve this September 13th, 2021 meeting minutes as presented.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Are we having technical problems?
Slight, yeah. I don't know if it's worth... Can we take, like, 3 minutes while I try to fix them? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Is that okay with everyone having just been?
I just checked the YouTube to see if it's working.
What do we have to do?
So I think, I think if we just stopped it, restarted the program, made an event, and then started again, I should do it. Since we'd already started that event for a few minutes.
3 minutes are up. Just saying.
I think so. So we can upload it. Yeah, I just did it on my computer. Thank you, everyone.
No, thank you.
We didn't fix it, but we tried it. But we know what the problem is.
It was worth the effort. Okay, let's proceed along with Agenda Item Number 7. We have a draft charge before us for the Solar Array Purchase Committee charge. Any thoughts on this charge?
Looks great.
Yep.
Very straightforward.
Ready to go.
Yep, comprehensive, to the point. David, do you have anything to add?
Just that I've spoken with a couple people that served on the committee before, and they're all ready to go. They just want you to say please do.
Sure. Okay.
I've got one question.
Sure.
Yeah, that has to do, do we need a minimum number? When do we stop taking applications, I guess, on a case-by-case basis?
I think by the time anybody comes in and applies and you get this back, you'll have the report back, would be my guess.
Okay.
I think they're ready to run numbers or rerun numbers, but... So I think I'd just do it on a case-by-case, in case they drag.
Gotcha, thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Would someone care to make a motion?
I move that the Board approve and sign the Solar Array Purchase Committee charge dated September 27th, 2021.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And David, would you care to talk about the Public Facilities Director hiring process that you will recommend to us?
Sure. Well, at your last meeting, you authorized to go ahead to advertise and seek interested individuals to fill the Public Facilities Director position. You know where we put that, it's on the newsletter. So we need to determine what process you wish to use to review those and hire, get somebody on board. The applications are due back on the 13th of October, and I was suggesting that I do the first cut of the reviews and then present the list to you all to get people come in for interviews and hopefully we'll find somebody. So I don't know if you want me to read this to you, but I was suggesting that I would do the initial screening and arrange for some interviews, and then provide all the applicants and all the application packages to you in case there was somebody in there that you thought the Board ought to interview. You would review those on the 25th of October, I believe. And hopefully later that week, we would have some interviews for people to get the ball, or keep the ball rolling.
Thoughts on David's proposal?
It all sounds great to me, except I got a question. What about October 18th? You got it here, we might begin, the Select Board will begin reviewing on the 18th.
Yeah, sorry. Thanks for reading what I wrote instead of me not reading what I wrote.
I just didn't know where it was.
If you wanted to have a meeting on the 18th to go over those applications that we received and either confirm interviews or add some additional people, we could then get in touch with them after that meeting, so we can interview the following week.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Gonna book up every Monday night you ever had dreams of.
That's what we're here for.
It's gonna be busy. October's gonna be a busy month.
It is.
So general concurrence?
That's great.
Okay, thank you for that suggestion, David. Let the mind-blowingly qualified individuals start flowing in. All right, well, prior to acting on Agenda Number 9, I need a motion, please.
I move that we suspend our meeting as the Board of Selectmen and that we convene as Board of Assessors.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. Does anyone need additional explanation for the adjustments we're being presented with? Okay, great. Let's have a motion, please.
I move that the Board grant abatement number 2021-03 to Main Dermatology LLC in the tax amount of $12.08 as the business was closed.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. And the second motion.
Move that the Board grant abatement number 2021-04 to Nancy Webb and Michael Morse in the amount of $1.51 to correct an error in the land assessment.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you all. A third motion, please.
I move that the Board grant abatement number 2021-05 to Stephen and Margaret Case in the tax amount of $25.67 to correct an error in the land assessment.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you all, and a fourth and final, fourth motion, please.
I'll do this. I move that the Board grant abatement number 2021-06 to Connie and Dennis Lenhart in the tax amount of $12.08 to correct an error in the land assessment.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And before proceeding on with the rest of our agenda, I need another motion.
I move that we adjourn our meeting as the Board of Assessors and reconvene as the Board of Select.
Seconded.
Moved and well seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And swiftly and rapidly moving along to our broadband update. Mike, do you wish to take it?
Well, sure, yeah. You've got the, first thing with broadband update would be to look at and see if we are all comfortable and want to move on with the timeline, to suggest a timeline for evaluating dealing with the RFP, which is someplace, it's an appendix, and one of those are in that report.
Appendix D.
Appendix D, thank you.
Only 8 pages in, maybe?
Yep.
You find it? Okay. We did, came up with that, Stephen, David and I, in a meeting, preedit based on when the report would come out. And I still can't find my copy, but, so I'm kind of talking off the top of my head. There it is. Appendix D, there you go. And, yeah, so David, this is all based on it going on on 20th, right?
Yeah, it's, the RFP was fine-tuned with the Board's changes. Broadband Committee had suggested about a half a dozen or so different vendors that we emailed it directly to, and it's been advertised in the paper per Town Charter requirements. So it's all in the works, hopefully.
Yeah, this is, this is looking at, this is the simple process by which David would, it's kind of like the same thing Dave described, just got done describing for Public Facilities Director. He would look through the initial round, pick what, or prioritize them perhaps, and see which one, which ones.
I think my, yeah, my, well, my, I think my review was solely to be, did they respond adequately to the request for a proposal? And then just to be the clearinghouse for the broadband committee, so they would all come here, we'd check to make sure that they, you know, did what the committee asked to do, and then all of them would be forwarded on to the broadband committee for their review and ranking. I'll turn it back.
Then the broadband committee would look at them and then give them to the Board of Selectmen and let the Board of Selectmen make decisions.
We're looking at a 15-month lead time, so the work would...
15 months?
Well, I'm looking at the schedule here, the 2022. The middle proposals due October 18th, 2022. Anticipated award of contract December 17th, 2022, which will put the survey out to start in 2023, unless my math is incorrect.
Well, I don't know if your math is incorrect, but it maybe, it sounds like you've got a, we may have put the wrong date down, because there, the contract should be awarded on December 13th of this year.
Okay, that's why I just, I see that written down here on the schedule, and it just concerned me, so I wanted to double-check and make sure that that was...
It should say December 13th, 2021. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, mine doesn't have any year date, with the exception of September 20th, 2021.
Yeah, it should be LBS contract towards 12th, 13th.
Yeah, I made the assumption that it would just be sort of chronological after.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We just, I didn't fill in those, the dates for the year. I was kind of...
Oh, 'cause I just am looking at this Appendix A request for proposals, and it says, right under broadband feasibility study, this is, it's written, proposals were received until 2:00 p.m. Monday, October 18th, 2022. And then down under subsection 2 in Schedule, it says the middle proposals due October 18th, 2022. And then section B of that same subsection, anticipated award of contracts, December 17th, 2022.
If you look a couple pages further back in the schedule, you'll see the final RFP that went out, and it's got a hand written at the top, says final. And the dates have been corrected to 2021.
All right, great, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So if the Board is comfortable with this timeline, this interviewing process, to get the information to the Board of Select Board, I guess we, the broadband committee would like to be able to move forward with that.
Okay. Does someone care to make a motion?
Sure. I move that the Board approve RFP review process at 4th. As Appendix Ds suggest... Sure, I move that the board approve RFP review process set forth as appendix D's suggested timeline for broadband committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and, all right, please continue, Mike.
Well, we've also, as you know, the broadband committee ended last week, so we've got a new charge. For this group to do, just to do this process of the, working with the feasibility consultant, moving forward. And so the new charge is an appendix number.
C.
C, thank you, yes, C, back in there in section ten. And.
Not to split hairs, but you've got three more days.
No, we don't. Well, the freedom is exhilarating, isn't it? Yeah. Anyway, this chart is fairly simple, it's, it's just the same wording up until, until you get to the bottom, if you look on the page where it says charge. Then it says interview feasibility consultant applicants who recommend to the Board of Selectmen those that seem most qualified, oversee work of feasibility consultant, including joint interim efforts. That may include community meetings forward with comment of feasibility study recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. And then should the Board of Selectmen do a supplemental charge or make any recommendations to broadband committee, then we would move forward with any of those recommendations or supplemental charge. And then this timeline, and it's different from the last two that we all approved, because this one is, gives the board a, gives the new committee a full year to make all that happen. Till we disbanded, September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that the board approve and sign a new charge set forth as appendix C suggested new broadband committee charge.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? I guess I would still say that I feel like I would be remiss saying that we don't have a solid funding yet, so it's.
Indeed.
This whole thing is. With great reservation, I'm, you know. Yeah, that you were figuring it out on the fly, so.
Well, that's, yeah, yeah, well, I think that as far as the charge goes to the committee.
Yeah, it's very straightforward, sure.
We can have that open-ended, but I mean, we're getting up to right now, the whole funding issue, how we wanna work with that.
Yep.
But as far as committee charge goes.
Yep.
I think we're cool.
Any other discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And to that end. Suggestions on how to afford the unknown amount, although it's safe to say, I'm gonna look at you, David, and also our broadband committee folks. That it's going to exceed the five thousand dollars that the taxpayers have authorized us to spend.
As far as, as far as, yeah, as far as we know, that's the typical price, is beyond five.
Yeah.
That's what we've been led to believe by the people we've talked with.
Yeah. Okay. So thoughts on how to come up with a balance?
Well, in the news, in the newsletter, David, I think lays out some really good ops, a good plan of attack for that. And also, in the language that the RFP has, it says, no, David, how did you word that, no contract?
Non-appropriation clause.
Thank you, thank you, for all you legal eagles, it's the non-appropriation clause. Okay, so anyway, I think it makes a lot of sense to treat the twenty thousand that we got from Waldo County as ARPA money, requiring public input. And solicitation of ideas from internally, from board members and committee heads. Commissioners, and however, we're gonna have to be, to award this contract, we have to have the money appropriated for that, we have to decide what to do with that. It kind of creates a sticky situation, because we are planning to have, you know, this two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in ARPA money. Go through a relatively lengthy process of figuring out internal needs, rating those, they conform to guidelines, getting public input as well. And then with all that information, kind of moving that ball forward by twelve, by, by the end of the year, two thousand and twenty-four. So, yeah, okay, so, but this, we, but we need, if we wanna make this broadband thing keep rolling, we gotta have a decision by tw- the end of twelve thirteen of this year. But it's still ARPA money, and so we should still get public input, even though the Waldo County Commissioners urged, suggested that we use that money for broadband. But we're not required to.
Well, and their most recent recommendation defaults back to the federal.
Right, yeah.
Which is.
Which.
So we're not, we're not, yeah, so it's, it's just a suggestion on the chart. That's all it is.
Clear response.
It's still ARPA money, is what it is.
So where are we with grant discussions? You said you've been.
We've got an application which I have filled out for the Island Institute. I need your okay to send it out, under the town letterhead.
So is a draft of that gonna come before us?
I could get it, yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't wanna include it in this, just because I thought it's gonna cloud the whole thing.
Sure, but perhaps between now and our next agenda, you could.
Sure.
Get with David, so that the board can review it. Yep.
Definitely, yeah.
Is there other grants that you're considering writing for?
None.
I know we talked about a few, but I know this Island Institute one is the one that we focus most on?
It is, because it's a quick turnaround time.
Yeah.
Of two weeks.
Oh, wow.
Wow, really?
Super fast, okay.
And.
Didn't know that.
Yeah, and the other ones are basically past deadlines.
Yeah, okay.
The main community foundation, whose name I'm getting wrong, I'm sure.
Nope.
Yeah.
Did I get that right?
I think you actually got that right.
Yeah, and I can't remember the other organization, we also missed theirs, it was August thirty-first or something like that.
Yeah.
But anyway, so they are, they are the best bet.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
What they'll do, I have no idea.
Okay, Josh, you had your hand up.
Yeah, so here's the, the decision tree that, that I think makes the most sense to me. So, number one, we apply for the Island Institute grant, we see what they say. If they say yes, then obviously we pay for it through that, if that covers the whole, the whole amount. Number two, if the board is comfortable with it, to spend that twenty thousand dollars from the commissioners. I feel like we're in an emergency in terms of needing to understand what the broadband, broadband situation is in Lincolnville. And because, because that is money that we weren't originally expecting from, from the ARPA funds. And because so many people in Lincolnville do not have good internet, I, I feel like we can go out on a limb and confidently say, this is a worthwhile expenditure. It's not to pay for a whole build-out, it's something to pay for a study. And if we don't feel that that's an appropriate way to spend that money, then we have a special town meeting. And, and we say to the public that we think this is a worthwhile endeavor, make that case, and then just see if the town wants to spend that money.
All right.
That spending money on this study, isn't that part of the criteria for that money?
That's, that's my understanding, yeah.
It's the main criteria, I mean, it really is the, was the driving force behind, and it's been the one consistent instruction that we really, we've received from top down. And if, you know, if we do decide that doesn't work, we can also go through the normal budgeting process like we do with everything else. So we've got quite a few options at our disposal, thank goodness.
And what I would like to, I mean, kind of, what I like to see is going through the same process of soliciting ideas internally and from the public. That we would for the two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And, but doing it, doing it in an accelerated fashion, so we have, we can, we're able to make a decision by twelve thirteen. And, but that's logistical, I don't know if that's a logistical nightmare or what, but for the town, for David to get that, solicit, to solicit that, try to solicit that input from commissioners, as well as get the notice to the public. Because it just seems to me as if we already have one need, a request already in our pocket, the broadband committee. We should see what else is out there.
Okay.
There may be a more urgent, urgent need.
Well, certainly.
Comes to service.
Yeah, certainly we can fold it into our workshop that we're gonna talk when we look at sort of the grand matrix of projects and expenditures and. And it'll be really great to have that sort of, what, what the taxpayers have already, what we suggested and they gave the thumbs up to, and then sort of immediate projects and then long-term projects. Okay.
I have one question for David, David, you mentioned that you're gonna get with the town attorney to see if there's, the town meeting was necessary to move forward with any of the spending this.
In, in her opinion, it is not. The Article Eight of what was approved at town meeting allows for the expenditure of funds, grant funds that we receive. And their recommendation was that you solicit public input along with.
A recommendation to do that.
Right. But that's a recommendation, that's not a.
Statutory requirement.
Right, she, she doesn't say that, she keeps us out of trouble in terms of the law and then gives guidance on how to keep you out of trouble the rest of the way.
Okay. And is it true that MMA recommends public input?
Yeah, main municipal recommended, recommends going out to town, going back to town meeting with appropriation requests. And not relying on a blanket article like we have, but there's where different lawyers can have different opinions about how to keep you out of trouble.
Interesting. Okay, any other thoughts on this for now? All right, who wants to give us an update on the Midcoast Broadband Coalition?
They're not.
Haven't had a meeting.
Okay. Fair, that's, no update is fine. It happens. Excellent, so let's, in the, in the realm of no updates, Karen, do you have an update for us?
We had a Midco Solidways Board of Directors meeting. All towns were represented, it was, and I chaired that meeting, our chair wasn't available for that, that meeting. We, it was basically discussing and voting on carryforwards for some of our line item accounts and a few things that we need to discuss about projects coming up. Other than that, it was business as usual, went over the, the accounts receivable, things of that nature, you know, and just, we continue to be in the black and it looks very good. This previous year has been very good, although it's been challenging for Midco Solidways. And the budget and our revenues look really good, they look really good.
Excellent.
Very proud of it.
Super. I feel like you answered this already, but do you have an update for us?
I know, that covered it.
Excellent, Mike, do you have an update for us beyond what you gave us already?
Yeah, this is just something about the woodshed, it's.
Yeah.
You can smell it in the air, people are starting to burn wood. And going, working about, the towns, they are, in the next few weeks, I don't know the exact date, they're gonna be delivering four cords here.
Oh, great.
Okay, and those will be dumping to be piled, and so I'd kinda like to put out the call for volunteers to help put that away. And need an okay from us so we can solicit that, because it's a town property under the town egress or anything like that. Put out that word to the Lincolnville Bolton Board or town website or whatever.
Yeah, David, is there any?
I think you're good, I think you just did it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't know what we needed.
No, I mean, we had an, we had an agreement approved a year ago with the woodshed folks that should be still good in effect. You might remind people that in order to get wood, you're supposed to call somebody, not just show up and help yourself.
Yeah, that's always a good, good reminder, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a sign there saying?
There is, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're so fortunate to have.
It's cool.
That as a resource, so let's.
But, but, but.
Let's all do our part to not.
Yeah, but, yeah, but.
Sauer the.
But in order to do it, we're gonna wanna get some people to help throw in the wood in the shed.
Yep.
So I'll, so I will just go ahead and make, when it shows up, or you know, it's gonna show up, I'll just make an offer to the Lincolnville Bolton Board and ask for help, if that works for you guys. Okay?
Sounds good.
Great.
And I have no, I have no update other than to, for the EMS review, are they calling it the EMS review board now? What are we?
Yeah, something like that.
To that effect, I just asked David to poke the other towns to see if we can actually have a meeting.
Yeah. Town of Rockford reached out to us six weeks ago, two months ago, wanted to know about arranging for the first quarterly meeting. And it didn't go too far, the vendor reached out to us with some suggested dates, which I shared with our two representatives who promptly said, yep, we're good. And I said, yep, we're good, just to tell us when, and kind of silent, so I reached out to the vendor to say, also to say, have you heard from anybody else, so.
Yeah. Hopefully.
It's like pulling teeth.
Hopefully we'll have.
But the ambulance is still showing up.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Jordan?
Yeah, I had a quick update on, this is just on the executive board on promoting competition in the American economy that kind of affects people in this town, issues they've been having about. Guidelines on not having penalties for canceling internet and phone service, as well as. About, oh God, I just lost my train of thought, sorry, David, he gave me a look, kinda just frightened.
That's okay, sorry. That's all right, if you think about it, you can put it in for the future, future agenda, update the Bolton Board or something like that. Okay, we have the treasure and payroll warrants to approve and sign.
I move to vote approve the treasurers and payroll warrants.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and final motion, please.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's still dark, we lost, we lost six.